Um.
Okay.
I'm gonna open the January fourth, two thousand twenty-three select board meeting. Happy New Year to everyone. Do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I think we. All for the executive sessions and with them. Personnel issue. Hopefully five minutes.
Okay. And unless you're bringing it up in your project report, we need to talk about the warning.
We're not per town.
Well, it needs to be signed at our next meeting. Need to know what's on it. To type it up. Anything else? Okay, a quick emotion for approval of the minutes of December twenty-first, two thousand point two.
I'll make the motion to accept.
You'll second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, changes? Missions additions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Close. So carry. Nothing. No one's on there for comments for the community? Monica, one. Any comments tonight, Monica?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll move on to correspondence. Well, this one is our letter for money that we'll pick up in the select board's review of what to do with this trip. The other one is the driveway permit for William Tolman. The issue last time was Joe DiNati needed to sign it because he's the owner of the property.
That would use a signature.
That's Joe's signature. Okay. So Dylan has approved it. Take a motion to approve the permit for one oh three Brook Road in Volca.
I'll make a motion to approve the one oh three for.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Close. So carry. I will send this around for. To sign off on. That's all I have in correspondence. So let's move on to the budget hearing finalized. The one thing I wanted you to do is consider. The question whether we were going to. Have a. Portlet in there for the. Visitors on the Lemoyle Valley Railroad, or we thought it was sufficient to allow people to be using our facilities? In the office and library.
First thing I think the portal has is new order. Yeah. We can add a couple of budgets. We can have. Transfer station in front of me.
Is there one twenty along? I think it's one twenty. I can find out in one second. It's one thirty-five along.
Okay.
Sixteen twenty? You agree?
And that's maintained. Everything we don't have touches.
You're supposed to come and clean at one. I mean, that's part of the theme.
Usually they just switch them down. As big of a difference station.
Now, is that going to be year round or just? Seven months a year?
I think year round, because there's going to be winter traffic on the trail. With snow realening. Of security.
Yeah, I was just thinking if you had snowmobiles there. Travel time is short.
Oh, we have a skating rink too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not bad if one or two people are townspeople that come by, but when. Or the traffic that's expected on there, I think is a little bit much. Putting in interrupting the library and the town office.
And you're going to locate it by the link to or whatever you want called over here, the picking tables are.
I would imagine because we don't have much other brand that we own.
Well, I'm thinking because of the snow, if you're going to, but there you go around, you gotta somehow work around it.
Well, it's, they're supposed to be keeping that. That's a class three road all the way to the railroad. They need to keep that open because of the sugar makers, maple people. They're supposed to be.
Yeah, they weren't before. They just go to the road where they turn it off to the building. And that was it. Then it was a.
Yeah, we'll have to make sure they don't do that. They need to keep it open. We've gotten complaints before from the sugar people. It's a class three. We're getting stated on that.
We're gonna have to make a push out area on the other side. Then we're gonna have to cut down some brush.
Yeah, the trouble is we do not own it.
I think that state is. I think if we got, hold the someone from the state and talk to them about keeping the brush back, I don't think they'd mind if.
No.
Went six to eight feet, just so you had a place to. For snow.
Well, we talked to about, you know, reaching out to them on that piece. They're willing to lease it to us if we need more parking. It's just not, there's just so many things on our plate right now. It's just something maybe in the spring. Or I can give you the contact and you can reach out to them. Just what the particulars are on that.
I don't think they would mind if we were to cut back brush because it's a class three at least. Four to, four to five, maybe six feet. That would still give you plenty of room to push.
Well, we technically own fifty feet. Down through there. So the other thing is we want to make sure that we prevent. We don't want anyone driving on the trail.
Right.
Driving the road and then getting on the trail. I think it's something we need to think through.
I think you're gonna have to put a sign because there's been three or four.
Yeah, I saw one the other day.
Because it's, we're gonna need something. The other one they had on the other side. But the full betrayal on the other side, almonds over there. I saw they put up four by four posts. So you can get a four by four posts on the entrances.
Yeah, that's the other problem. Plus snowmobiles. One of these snowmobiles are getting pretty wide.
Yeah.
Okay, right now we're working on the budget, so I think the details of it will have to work out. We won't have any money really in the budget until July first, so we have time. This is a budget for July first, so.
Outside of the recruitment. Other best cloud.
They have kept it open in the past.
Yeah.
And they, so we will, we're all set, including that in the budget.
Mm-hmm. Where, whereabouts are you? In the nursing nurse.
Well, John miscellaneous or.
Yeah, I was thinking miscellaneous. I think it's. Where's the one that the, that's, that's a team of transfer stations that like separate to different right?
Well, those at park and recreation, would you put it under that?
Either way.
I think that's it. It's in an area rather than miscellaneous.
Okay.
We'll just.
So it becomes then the. Well, yeah, because this isn't detailed, but it doesn't, at that point, it becomes part of, part and right budget.
Well, you can make it a part of our appropriation. Like we do the library, then we can put L B R T portal underneath. And so they know that it's not coming out of their money. And hopefully the. Treasure can come track. Separately.
Think that way, it's, it's got a headache. It doesn't know, how come you got five thousand dollars miscellaneous? Doesn't, you know. Once you start getting over a certain amount, when you talk to accounts, they get upset.
Yeah.
If you want to explain this, you put it together first.
Yeah, it's. So this is an update from our last meeting. In which there were a few variables that we did not have. We have filled those in. There were things like the assessor payroll tax have. The three percent. And a few details like that. So where we're at right now is that the, it's an increase of four percent. To the taxpayer. Yet there are a couple of variables that we don't have yet, which will be very impactful, one way or the other. The sheriff's budget was uncertain till today, and so the sheriff ended at five percent. And that would be for one year, five percent increase to the sheriff's budget. The other variable is the fund balance. And the fund balance we have set here at fifty thousand. We won't know what the actual fund balance is until the auditor to get back to us. And I understand there was something between that week numbers that had to be worked out. Do you know?
Yeah, they're working on. I don't know what the problem is exactly. I mean, I answered whatever question they needed.
Okay. So the bottom line is if we, the portal, add in portal, that's not going to affect this one way or the other. But the fund balance definitely will. If it remains at fifty thousand, we are going to have a four percent increase to taxpayer. If it goes up. That'll have a dramatic effect. So if it goes up to sixty-five thousand, then the increase will be at two percent. In an, in an eight percent inflation year. Raising two percent, I think is, is, is very good. Where we stand right now is four percent, and it really is dependent on the fund balance. And also it's dependent on what we want to do with the equipment fund. So those are the two variables left. One we can answer making, right, the, the women fund. The other, we just need to wait for the auditor. If we find that the auditor comes back with a low. Fund balance. And we try to reduce this budget. And we're gonna, there are some areas that. Actually could have been product, but not very many, not very many at all.
So my question is, can you use, do you think you can use any of the ARBA funds? If we don't have a very good fund balance? That's just a question.
And I'm not sure. You could put it for its equipment fund or.
Well, I, I know you can do that. My personal feeling, thinking about it. I think the equipment replacement fund has to be raised. Or we'll be in trouble at some point. You know, now that we have this in front of, looking at it. I mean, one year it's going to be a hundred fifty-one thousand. And if we don't build up some sort of. Pusher. It's really a worry.
Yes.
I took, I took this and with just with the idea of paying off. I picked the shortest one, the shortest time, timeframe, and I think the excavator. Yeah, it's ninety thousand. So if you pay it off, it reduces out to two thousand twenty-seven, you know, eighteen thousand dollars a year. It helps somewhat. Just throwing out ideas. It just seems like that we've, we had to buy a lot of equipment, spend a lot of money. And it's going to be rotating and we've never really, we, we need something to help us catch up and make it affordable. That's all I'm thinking because this really isn't affordable. But it was necessary.
I think there's a couple of things that can be done. One is pay off, maybe some to reduce it. The other is to not turn over. As quickly as we're turning over. If you wait another year or another two years. Because as this new equipment is being well taken care of, it will be out of warranty for a couple of years, a year or two. But it takes that payment schedule and it stretches it out to where. You know, to the point where you're not going to have border lines. Or what's there, two, three, four, five, six lines, you have four lines. Which means not wanting anything else. For two years. And the combination of that and paying off the excavator. Might get us where we need to be.
Can you, can you, what areas you want to look at mine?
No, I've looked at it today. That's about what I would say. I could pay off the excavator and push out. The turnaround on the trucks.
Keep, keep them longer, yeah.
Hopefully, if the people maintained up to what they should be, there'll be minimal after the second year to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this group will take away care of this stuff. Like everything else, I mean, it's, it's heavy equipment. It's always been needed. There always has to be a budget for repairs. So if you're likely, then I can take that sheet and. I can't do it in my head, but I can work through it and give a couple of models.
Well, next time you can.
Yeah, I kind of did it, but I mean, I went through and took eighteen thousand on. I see, I figured, all right, and we've already paid on. Two thousand twenty-two, so we're only five. My question, I guess the real question we're looking at, if, if, if we're thinking of doing that is. How much should be in the equipment replacement fund?
And that, that's calculated.
So this year we're going to owe. Well, if we take the excavator out, our payment this year will be eighty-five five. So we, we have a ninety-six thousand dollar surplus, so we'll be digging into a little bit of that. I'm just wondering if we should. It'll be tight. It might work.
Again, if. I mean, I think that's the path to making it work. If for some reason the fund balance doesn't come in where we need for it to be. There's no way we can raise the. Equipment.
Okay.
Not going up to five, six percent.
Right. So I think you agreed on all the points. We just, you'll bring it back and wait for the audit?
Yeah. Now, this is our, is this, what's our third one?
Well, it has to be posted thirty days before our calendar meeting, which is March first. Or seventh, so. I have that list, but I don't think it's with me.
Okay, so we did have a meeting for two to the last.
We have one, but that meeting on February first will not, it will not be with me, I can believe. When did we have to, I just came across when we had to send out, wasn't it the twenty-seventh? We had to send the scanner of the town reported.
She has to have it in the hand.
Yeah, and everything, everything has to be signed. Yeah.
And what date was it?
January twenty-seventh.
So we have one meeting.
Yeah, that's for me, we have one meeting, yeah.
Unless we call a special.
Right. So I see you have it here, Mo, it is highlighted.
That's because I was waiting for a run.
Yeah.
I'm still waiting for it. But I did, I bumped it a thousand miles, which is, I think, based on what he rejected last year. I don't think it's going to seem. The assessor I highlighted just. One that struck me, we've committed that to that. When it worst comes to worst, that might be a. For one year.
Well, it's not going anywhere. We're here on a meeting tonight.
I just want to highlight this.
Why, so why don't you, when you come back next time, do you want to. Give us, how much would that affect the thing, you know?
In this particular model right here, it's not.
Or we could throw it into the. Okay, thank you for your work on this.
It's tight. It's really tight.
Yeah.
But I mean, one of the things I've noticed is the general climate, ever since I've attended board meeting. You know, previous board, this board, et cetera. There's, there's always been a push to the black fund. And I've seen it happen for six years or so, six, seven years to black fund. And I mean, I think that's always a good call, but it can't go on forever. Yeah.
No. Even three percent, I think is acceptable in this day and age, you know, inflation. Otherwise, it's going to hurt us in the end.
Exactly.
Do we have any other? Things people would like to talk about with the budget, for first, to bring to us? If you do, send them an email so we can hopefully.
That is one thing. Does anyone come to you from the state saying our garden rails are not acceptable?
They have not, but, but they aren't acceptable. In certain conditions.
They're saying some of the garden rails were. Manufactured, said they were acceptable to the roads. And now the state is going around and saying that guard rail isn't acceptable because it doesn't meet our standards.
No. I have not heard of anything along those lines.
I think that's something we're going to have to be aware of this next year.
Well, we did jump the, the garden rail budget when, um. Because we're just anticipating there are going to be more of those things.
Right. Well, the biggest problem is some of them are over engineered, over rated. So when you hit them, it actually does put damage to your vehicle and you. That's why their guidelines really change. I just thought, I mean, I've been listening to this on the radio.
Okay.
It's mostly the interstates they're hitting right now.
Yeah.
They're thinking of.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have guardrails on North Volca Road that are going by way of the erosion. They're leaning over. We have guardrails up here in the streets.
Someone crashed into the roads in that corner.
This is what, by.
I'm just right down.
Low.
Those are probably, I think. The one coming up, there's corners and that's.
And then the ones here on School Street are this, this high, yeah.
You could hit it and jump it.
And then, you know, it'd be nice to do an inventory of some of the places that do need it.
Yeah, I have that in mind for you.
Okay, let's move on to the project managers' report.
It'd be reading through here. Okay, so. We received the certificate with highway mileage. To the best of my knowledge, there is no change. In that, we do need to, if everybody agrees with that, we need to start up.
There is, and we have the twenty-third or twenty-third or something, I think, but. Well, there is no changes, but I, I got the notice too. And I was a little confused about, um. It says something about the legislature in two thousand twenty-three, and I wanted to make sure that all our. Trails and class four roads were on there. I, I didn't quite understand it, or if it was a. A usual, just.
Our flip letter.
Yeah, um. The government. So.
I'm sorry, okay.
So what they, what they have here, we have seven point oh four class four roads listed. And we have four point five million legal trail listed. Uh, and these are the numbers from previous year. And. So I can look into that.
Yeah, I'm looking through it too. Um, because you can download the map. Two is an attachment.
Okay.
Just because running into all that trouble with. Harry Alley, who's bugging me, bugging me, bugging me, not Turcot Road. Some state mapping.
Um, the last time we talked about the fact that we. Um, went down to Alford Bridge and maybe got some professional advice, um, again. From an official standpoint, there's nothing that you don't really need to do anything, but if you are going to do something, you want a cautionary sign. Um, and I'm inclined to think the cautionary sign would be okay. Um, and I don't know whether there's other things, but this is starting that I, we can test it around. Eight point fifth situation. One way bridges, it says everything on the side.
Yeah.
And it says slow, too, right?
Right. Be back, perfect.
All right. Good, uh, mowing the contract, so we are not formally contracted. Uh, my question is with that, is we both did, like, four thousand something?
Forty-five.
Forty-five hundred. Yeah, does that need to go out to the public?
Yeah, no.
Okay. So I got to work on that. Um, appropriations, um, the only change to appropriations is the.
What, the harmonical song?
Yes. Did come through, so, so now we have, uh. Have this complete and identical, agreed this year's list.
It didn't crossberry saplings?
No, they didn't.
And I, and, and I'm wondering if they're not going to, because didn't Crasberry just give them like twenty or thirty thousand dollars?
They did, out of their, uh, apartment funds.
Right.
And, and it is Crasberry Center.
Yeah, um, I, a lot of kids from Woke go there, you know?
Uh, but no, we have not, and, and yet there is still an open later. Um. Transfer station, um, just want to give you an update from the litter committee that, uh. I know that there's been some concern about the textile, um, recycling. Building up too quickly, uh, so Michelle is working with help see. Uh, see if we can't, but schedule it, it's been very, very long for her. It just will all the time. Um, North Woke Road.
Uh, uh, transfer station reminds me, um. Are we going to have a budget to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and North Woke Road, uh, this is just an FYI that, um, after our last meeting in which our. Our state reps, uh. Came in and chatted, uh, did some follow-up and. Uh, was looking for some guidance as to. What the process might be, and if there is a process, uh, in which a town such as Woke can, um. Not be solely responsible for maintain, maintenance of what really is a commercial connector road. And it turns out that there is a process. Um, and, uh, the, the basic process is that, uh, the town can make an appeal to V-Trans. Uh, I suspect it needs to be a very detailed, comprehensive appeal, which would include a road study and other. Uh. Bits and pieces of information that are relative to the road. Uh, and if V-Trans approves that, then it goes straight to the General Assembly. Uh, for, uh, for a vote on it. If V-Trans does not accept it, then we can appeal to our state reps and they can, uh. What would they do, many write a bill or?
They could introduce a bill.
Introduce a bill. And they help us out, so, and I suspect, uh. You know, if, the, the North Woke Road is. Uh, quite a burden for this town, um, and it's only going to become more and more burdensome. And quite honestly, it's unfortunate. If we were able to, uh, transfer that, the. Responsibility to the state, it would have a significant impact on our budget in a very positive way. Here. So I think it's something that has to be really well thought out, well laid out, well researched. Um, and it's going to require probably a bit of support. That we have to go to our, our reps in Washington, um, and work with our chair, et cetera, so. Uh, but it's something that starts with a, uh, gathering packs, gathering accident information, gathering, uh. Uh, the road study information, and I think that Ron Moore will be very, very helpful in making sure we have all the. Stuff that we need to do. I noticed there was two more accidents on, uh, North Woke and fifteen, just in the past three weeks. So that's really adding up.
We should still do a, a road study anyways to see what the traffic flow is on.
Oh, yeah, we'll just, absolutely.
Spring.
So we've, uh, we've already applied for that. I'll see if we see, what the, the six locations, um, which will, it includes, um. Speed, type of vehicle, um, and turning direction. I think that would be extremely helpful. So the MRGP notice of intent, um, I've completed that, uh. Got a hold of Jim Ryan, and now we understand what all the fees are. Those fees, by the way, have been introduced in this budget that we're looking at. Um, and so as long as the board is okay with it, I would. Next step would be to submit the notice of intent.
Never required to.
Yeah, we are required to. And you got a basis on improvements.
Right.
Uh, guardrails, speaking of guardrails, is, um, last year, we did not have a very successful. Um. Acquisition of guardrails, um, we had difficulty getting a hold of a vendor, and then we did, and get back, et cetera. So I've asked, um. Dylan to start right now and start getting some quotes and getting, um. And so that we can make decisions on guardrails and get it committed, um, for the spring. So the champagne oil person, which I think Linda. Put the article here at twenty thousand dollars. So I contacted them and, and, you know, mentioned that we're, we're waiting on a ground field, uh, study. Um. And we learned today that in order to get the bracket, instead of moving, there's some more paperwork we have to do. Uh, but regardless, if we're going to put this on the warning. I wanted to get a sense of what they were looking for. And they came back with, they mentioned that they were. Uh, they believe that it was last appraised in two thousand seventy for thirty thousand dollars. And they were hoping, uh, that they could, that they would like to ask forty-five percent dollars for it. Uh, and then I went, I looked at the, uh.
Listers.
The listers card, and it is sixteen thousand six hundred is actually what it's appraised at. It's been, I believe, since twenty fourteen. So it's a big difference from what they think it is, what it really is, and they've been paying taxes on sixteen thousand six hundred since twenty fourteen. So those are the numbers, you know, there's a big gap between what they think and, and what we're even appraised at.
So there are differences, though, the listeners appraise. The property for, and what a real estate agent appraises the property for, or gets a mortgage, so I. Don't know if they're just pulling your leg, if they've gotten a real appraisal from the appraisal firm or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I have to find that, yeah.
The other thing to keep in mind is that our values are at about eighty-five percent. Is that letter we got from the state, talk about it later on.
Probably something to read, see.
Yeah. So I don't, I personally think twenty thousand is fair, that's why I put it in there. Um, and I'm just throwing it out, I don't know, it's on Route fifteen.
It's a flood plain, it is a small parcel, can't do anything with it, it is a, open gas station.
It could be a flood plain, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah.
That is, that would be a flood plain.
Well. The worst is going to happen is a park.
Right, but it is in the flood.
So we can cry flood plain, we can. From an hazardous soil and.
We're constantly negotiating.
I, I think twenty thousand is fair, in my mind, but the board can put in there two cents too.
So again, the deadline, I need to get this in with the board. Um, we have one meeting left.
So, um. I was looking at the one we had in November two thousand twenty-one where, um. The voters authorized a select board to purchase, uh, forest land, um. We did put in, um, a purchase price. You know, being conditioned around the town, being able to receive grant funding for all the twenty-five thousand, I mean, you. You can, but we can word it somehow, you know, not to exceed a certain amount. Um, so we don't have to, like, have to narrow it down, just give us the authority to negotiate and not spend more than.
I think you could do the same thing, just say, we're going to try and negotiate for twenty thousand. No more than that, if it's going to be more than that, then we just don't buy it.
Right. No, there was that, I think. Uh, and then the last one they have is East Road property. Uh, in which. I asked, uh, Linda to give us the, our expenses, um, and the. Eagle Services, uh. And all metals cleared property is eighty-five fifty-one, eight thousand five hundred fifty-one.
I did talk to, um, Bill Morrison again, um, a little confusing. He really, he, he's approached, um. A couple of people. He hasn't really got an answer to it. Uh, in, in our talking, you know, he wanted, he said it was the only access to Bear Swamp, but, um. This property isn't in Bear Swamp, is it? And it's just a little edge of it, I mean. So we were to preserve it for people to go into Bear Swamp, but. That property is owned by Sterling College.
Yeah, Bear Swamp is on the other side, this is the, what do you want to call it?
Tributary.
It's Tamara Group.
Right, but it's.
Really have a hard time wrapping my head around, um, the whole thing.
This point.
In terms of saving, saving property access to what? Uh, to people to go on private property? You know, we talked about the clean water last time, and then I was thinking, how, how is that really going to affect? This property or, or getting grants, I, I haven't been able to really figure out. The whole thing, Dylan.
I, I'm under the impression that that property. Is, is, as Chris said, it's a, it's Tamara Group, it's a tributary, tributary going into Bear Swamp. And it's a place where you could park and slosh your way in there if you wanted to.
I mean.
I don't, I didn't, I don't, you know, that there's any private property between there.
The thing is, is. Yeah. It would give you fishing access. To the tamarack.
But do we own the tamarack?
No, the state owns the.
But, oh, the state owns that, or does?
There's a, there's waterway, you can't touch a waterway. All you basically would be doing is setting that property aside for a parking area. So right now, you have no way of getting into Bear Swamp, unless you go on private property and parking vehicle. Here, you could park the vehicle. You could go on to Bear Swamp, or you could go down to Tributary, which is now going all the way down to Wild Branch. To me, someone should be saving that area to keep it from being polluted. Because it is a water system.
Okay.
Once you go to a headwaters or a tributary and you start messing with it. You're going to allow silt pollution, all this. Filtering down through and causing problems, and we have that great big cobbler on, uh, downhill that it goes through.
So, uh, what I was just having a hard time in trying to envision was. The town would be creating a parking area. In trying to envision was the town would be creating a parking area access. To. Allow people to go on other people's land, and I'm not sure that that's fishable out there. All there um. So that's why I was having a hard time. I, I felt like I had to do more research, I need to go.
I think it would be more if your biologist and state people would be using it, I don't think it's just for. The residents and out of state or town people to go there.
Nobody would want to.
Right, but I mean, it's more or less just so you sound.
Okay, I'll do more research um. And give some maps and it will be helped.
I mean, I've been through that area, it's just all swamps until you get to downhill as well. Wear hip waders and. Snowshoes so you don't sink.
Yeah, exactly. Uh. Okay, but what I wanted to convey was that. You. We do know we got some into it.
So do we, do we know absolutely that um Tim Ryan and the Reeves do not want? Any of that property?
I'm gonna have to make a round of false.
I almost emailed him, but then I didn't want to get his hopes up if. He wanted it and then we decided we were gonna keep it, but you know. I had a conversation with him and he was quite excited about it.
Jim Ryan?
Uh this fall. Uh but so he might have changed his mind, I, it seems like there's a lot of rumors. And like I said, you know, doing boundary line adjustments to some of the land um to vote those people on the sides. For a little bit of money and keeping the middle part um.
Yeah, um okay. Okay, I do know that um. Katie Black mentioned at one point she'd like that first letter refusal. If, you know. If we, we told her way back when. Um so can the voters? And her comment was that the voters agreed to sell it, she'd like to have her try to refuse them. That doesn't mean she still feels that way. So I thought that Jim was not excited about it.
Well, I had a long conversation out there in the parking lot, mostly changes behind um.
Well, do, I'll do some work, do you wanna do that or I can do that?
I mean, I'll, I'll.
Back in touch with them about it?
Because that was really our original intent is to sell it, not to keep it.
Right.
But Fish and Wildlife want it maybe?
They will buy the land, yes.
Cause if they didn't wanna have somewhere they could access it, that would be a thing for them.
Yeah, and we talked to Fish and Wildlife down when we were at the, this cabin, this down in the river down here. And there was some confusion Levi owns it and he thought he had multiple acres and actually it didn't. But anyway, uh. Fish and Wildlife said, we will buy it. We'll buy it now, so we, we won't sell anything, we will buy land. So it's a good idea.
Cause they would be the ones that would affect was viable parking for. People to use it, they would be the ones to manage it, take care of it. All of them.
And they would do it, right, they do it correctly.
So I see, but do you feel that we have to go to the voters to sell that? That we got in tax sale?
That's been my assumption.
I thought you gave us, I ran off not too long ago, there was three ways you could go for. I'll dig it back up, we're selling land. Something from BLTC.
There's none.
I'll find it in my minutes, I, I just went through all my minutes with the air. And I was reading it. Okay, anything else?
Yes, with me.
Thank you.
We'll solve it from.
So why don't we do the reasonable suspicion policy now? And then when, if ballet comes on, we'll switch to them, I told him I was done.
Um so the reasonable suspicion policy, uh I emailed it out. Uh and also gave it to Chan, who is the chief steward. For the road crew, he in turn um. Ran it across Larry, who's the, the rep. Uh who thought that it was. Uh standard procedure, not a good thing to have, but he thought it was too much of a template. And not enough. Directly for book. Um it is pretty hefty.
I started to read it, but it was too long, I gave up, I'd say.
So. I think that's a reasonable request to see modify it down to what makes sense in the town.
Okay. So it seems like we forgot um. In June to. Fill out these officers appointed by the store for um for last year. Which should be recorded in the land records, I'll give you a copy. I went through and. Because we, we didn't do it all at once, we've done it over, over the year kinda, and filled in um. Everyone's terms, just so we can be on the same page and we know where. Everything is, so I'm just gonna. We take a quick look at it. If you don't see any changes, then. Make a motion to accept and sign it. Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the. Officers appointed by the select board for two thousand twenty two. On the second.
On second, yeah.
All those in favor? Post? So fair. Oh, most of you agree on that. Revolving loan fund check. So this is the final closeout of the Sterling. View. Money, that high part has been the. Lead on this. So it comes to four thousand one hundred twenty six dollars and three cents. And the board is to decide where to put this money, it's not tax money.
Thank you.
Any other suggestions for this money? Four thousand one hundred twenty six dollars and three cents.
They go to general fund?
It would, I mean.
Wouldn't care, then you can decide later where you put it.
A lot of. It doesn't really sit there, I mean. At the end of the year, it's, it's just absorbed.
Yeah.
It better to just put it, um, put it into something like. Equipment fund or the capital fund or.
No, I think equipment fund is where we, that's our pressure fund.
Mm-hmm. Then we'll bring it up to about a hundred thousand.
Or could you use it for one of the payments on that voter?
Well, that's only, this is only four thousand, it doesn't even scratch the surface. So we have, we have a ninety six thousand dollar balance and then we'll put this in, it would make it a hundred thousand, and so if we. Keep the equipment. Um tax money that goes in every year, you know, down, then we can keep. Taking from that hundred thousand to top it off. Uh is done. Oh.
How much are we gonna have to end up paying for bridge over a year? Just go to street.
Uh construction cost is zero. Um when you receive a letter with the new um. Infrastructure bill or whatever. Um we will have the five percent of the scoping study. Um the. Engineering and the right, right of way of getting the way, we have to pay five percent. All I know is the scoping study is around six thousand, no, we're having a trouble, we're having trouble getting. The grant agreements because um. The town has to go on to this federal government's website and be activated and we're not. It's a problem. Yeah. For, you know. They don't like that we were incorporated in seventeen eighty one.
Seriously?
Yeah, it's a problem.
Well, okay.
I, I don't know how much, you know. Yeah, there's just not so much.
What if we were to place it there?
Well, that would be in um, that money, that would go into the capital reserve fund and that's what's that's for, we have. Three hundred and one thousand in there now.
Yeah.
That's for capital, that's what I assume our capital improvements would come out of.
Nothing, just, just put it in the equipment fund.
Yeah, I think that's where.
Why don't you make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we put the. Uh. Revolving loan fund disbursement into the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four equipment fund.
I'll second that.
Well, there isn't a year, that fund always sits there.
Oh, okay.
Just in a.
Did it into the.
Just the equipment fund now. Um.
Scrape, scrape.
Um. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? So carry. Holiday pay, transfer station attendant. Can we bring that up?
Yeah, so we uh. The issue is that Silvio, his workdays are. Saturday, Sunday. Um and this year and last year. They became um. Uh holidays. So Christmas last year is on Saturday, Christmas this year is on Sunday. Uh last year, we agreed to pay him for. Um. That day. Christmas and New Year's. Um because it fell on his workday. Um this year um. We, we hadn't discussed it. And so he was not paid for Christmas and New Years this year, and so we're here. To open that discussion, uh I think the argument might be that uh we don't have holiday pay. We don't have a holiday pay policy. Um and as for a part-time employee. Um there is no. Specific policy. Um. And. I think the question is. Uh because we did it last year. This will be the last time this will occur for another five years. Unless there's a leap year somewhere. So the argument for is that, you know, it did, falls on his holiday, it falls on his workday. It didn't fall on anybody else's workday. Um. And we did. Have all town employees able to take Mondays off. Um and those were paid, right? Mondays were paid. For the Monday after New Year's, the Monday after Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
Um and that was of no value to Silvio, cause that's not. It's, it's not in his work scope.
So how's the board feel?
Talking about um. Wherever's. The total being others. We did ask around the bit to see if anybody would be. Attended by or felt that, you know, that it's. Their position doesn't get holiday pay and so uh, you know, it wouldn't make sense for Silvio to get holiday pay. Um and I didn't sense any. Concern for that. I think there's a bit of a morale issue, I don't, I'd not say that you've got the whole room. Um but. You know, I think that. Silvio. He, Silvio's Silvio, uh but the one thing I can say about him is he's extremely reliable. He's there every time. Whether he's collecting. Properly is, is something we gotta continually work on, but um we don't have a situation where. Uh we have to call up the troops because. Our transfer station attendant, you know, is not showing.
That's about a hundred and twenty dollars, a little over, um what's your feeling?
How about giving him a hundred? Say Merry Christmas. Say okay, here, we'll give you a hundred, don't worry about it, it's paycheck, whatever. Merry Christmas, don't worry about the. Taxes and all the other, kubala.
Are you just talking about a bonus, just a.
Just give him your bonus, straight bonus check of a hundred. I think he'd be happier.
What's number?
Say including all the other headaches. Taxes and so forth and so on.
Right. You acceptable to that?
Yeah. I think, you know. Here's your Christmas bonus.
We need to make a motion.
Yep.
I'll make the motion, we give. Our transfer station attendant Silvio a hundred dollar Christmas bonus.
For working on.
For not.
For not being, not being able to work on his workdays, due to holidays.
Right, right.
Now second, then, you know, just come out of our general fund.
All those in favor? Aye, post, so carry. Hi, Tim.
Hi Linda, hello, select board, happy new year.
So, Tim, um. Kurt's gonna take over the ballet, Wilkett, um, we said we relooked at the fees. In January. We had lowered them.
Right, so, um. Uh, yeah, if I recall correctly, you know, there was, there was a period of, uh, some stress at the ballet.
That's a fact.
Yeah, uh, in, in which, uh, I think there was a request for us to lower the fee. And we said we would revisit it, um, in January. And, uh, uh, here we are.
January?
It is January. Um, and so we thought we'd just kind of get an update from you, um. You know, what your thoughts are, are things getting better and, and can we, uh, readjust this back to. Uh, what we've had it budgeted for.
All right, um. Jumping right to the punchline. It appears we are in a wholly different place. Uh, organizationally than we were back in. Uh, late summer when we came to you in the first place. Um, I, I, I would say, you know, we're not quite out of the woods because our enrollment simply hasn't risen to the levels that it had before the pandemic. But, um, it is night and day between where we were and where we now are. And, uh, you know, on the one hand, Ballet Wilkett would love to pay no rent for any studio space that we're using, but on the other hand, there's fairness and. And, uh, making sure it's a good deal working for all of us, including the town of Wilkett. So. Um. You know, I think we could probably go back, and I hate to say this, but we could probably go back to the, uh. To the, uh, standing agreement from before. Um, without too much stress on our end.
Okay.
So it's not very presidential like for me to volunteer that, but, you know, we're all a small community and fair is fair.
Right. All right, well, very good, uh, uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that things are going better. Um, you know, we, we, we're in the midst of working through our budget and, um, one thing that's become very obvious, um. And I'm sure for you as well, is that, uh, inflationary costs. Uh, are, are stressing us a bit here, um, you know, things like heating and. Um, those, uh, those commodities, so, uh, you know, it would be. Great for us and, um, um, you know, hopefully, good for you at the same time. Good, okay.
Um, so just, so there's, I, I'm clear, um. I presume what the board is considering and what you'd like to do is simply to revert back to the, uh, old rental agreement.
That's correct, yes.
It would be from two fifty to three fifty a month, thousand to three fifty a month.
Yeah, um. Seems fair, it, you know, from our perspective, it's still the deal of the century. Um, and I've said this before, but I'd like to say it again, uh, Ballet Wilkett's really looking for its own dedicated. Uh, studio space, would like it to be in Wilkett. We've had discussions, no- nothing official, and I'm not putting anything out there on the table, but we have sort of pondered whether the, um. Town of Wilkett is interested. In maybe, uh. Somehow selling or reaching some greater arrangement with Ballet Wilkett such that we could really turn it into our own space. Um, without having to ask permission every time we want to do something and that, you know, we, we know we can have confidence in it being our space. I'm getting way ahead of the conversation here, but if you have any feedback, I'm, I'm all ears.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is, uh, that the, the facility is really two, two things, one is it's, it's used for Ballet Wilkett. Um, and then it is a space that the public can rent out for. For their, their various functions, um, the. The number of times that it is rented out to the public versus. Uh, ballet, uh, is, is, the ballet is significantly, uh, using it, uh, more. Uh, than, than the public does, but I think that that would be one of the way. Uh, considerations is, um, that facility. That has been traditionally used for the public, um, and having that, uh, become private. Um, is something that would. Require some considerations.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying and it's great to have a public meeting space, I, there's no two ways about that. So, you know, there's, there's some need maybe on both our parts and I'd say that that's the mother of invention and maybe we'll figure something else out. Like I said, we want to stay in Wilkett, it's kind of like where we put our roots and what our mission statement's all about. Uh, so we'll just go back and scratch our heads a little more and see what other ideas we come up with.
Okay, interesting, it, uh, yeah, I mean, I think it's worthy of, of discussion, further discussion, yeah.
Always welcome.
And a lot of thought, I mean, that's. Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I know that you're, you were interested in, uh. Um, did, did the lockbox thing ever work out?
Uh, once the select board gave us permission, I just tossed it over to Joanne and she did something or didn't do something, I don't know what yet. I hope it did.
Okay, and I know that there was, uh, a need for Cubbies and.
Yeah, make dance light.
Yes, so Joanne and I did go into the school, I was over Christmas, I keep forgetting. Um, and looked at the Cubbies and she did say she wanted them.
Yeah, yeah, those are.
I forgot, I did.
And, and painting, um, was also something they were looking at.
Yeah.
We have a, uh, we have a, uh, a new town handyman who happens to be a professional painter. And if you look, if you can look around in your camera, you see that, uh, he's working on this room right now.
Um, are you suggesting this would be somebody we would like to talk to to get painting work done?
You, you could, yeah, sure.
Oh, well, I appreciate the suggestion, we. You know, we operate on a shoestring budget, so it's probably, we try to call in all the volunteers and. And we'll do what the town of Wilkett allows us to do as far as painting the spaces.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, anyway, that's, I just wanted to let, uh, make you aware that, that, that resource is, is there and I understand that, uh. Uh, volunteers are much less expensive, um. But, um, um. Just something.
Less reliable.
And less reliable, yes. So that's something we can discuss upon the select board as well, yeah.
I welcome it.
Okay. Very good.
Well, thank you, Tim, for coming.
Yeah, it's a pleasure, uh, I'll alert the board. Ballet Wilkett Board that, uh, we're expecting a, a rent increase and, uh, good for us. Well, I mean, you know, it's good news that we're having this conversation, it was really tough last summer and. Uh, a lot of great things have happened as a result, so. Good.
Good, great, okay, thank you again.
Appreciate it, thank you for your time, take care.
All right, we're out of here.
Linda, were you gonna come in about the town march?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I didn't know if you wanted to start, Linda.
Huh?
I didn't know if you wanted to start.
Yeah, you know, are you home or not here?
I'm home.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were. Um. I brought this up just because, um, I find, firstly, I find it very hard, um. To get your orders and then expect, uh, a really quick turnaround, so I wanted. Because I like to go through them, you know, I, I feel like it's the select board's responsibility of, of these bills and to know what. What we're signing off on, that we approve. So I wanted to somehow work out how we could make this work, um. You know, I, I, I was in the same boat when I was town clerk and Kim wanted. More time and I guess now I understand it. Uh, better. Because, um, as we're all volunteers. You know, I might not be available, you know, write off to, to sit down and sign the orders, but people are looking for their paychecks, um. So I wondered if we could somehow work out where we maybe had, um. You know, a couple of days' time in between. When we get the warrant and when we have to sign off.
Sure, so Edie and I talked and, um. We're gonna, we, we discussed sending out a, a memo to the, um, employees saying that they.
You have to get, we can, you're all below limit.
We can hear you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We discussed, uh, sending out a memo to the town employees. Asking that they get their time cards in by ten AM on Monday. And then we could get the orders to, um. Uh, send out to, um, Kurt and Linda by noon, so then we could have the paychecks available for them. By noon on Wednesday. And we thought that would work.
Okay.
So that would be exactly forty eight hours turnaround.
Yeah, I'm not picky about the forty eight hours, but it's some. Some turnaround because, you know, I could be in Burlington or Kurt could be at the doctors, I mean, it. You, you can't, um, just expect that, you know, we're just sitting there waiting to sign orders.
That's right, and. And we will, uh, we also discussed, uh, separating a payroll from regular bills. So we would send you, uh, a payroll order. And if we had orders for that day that were a rush order, but not necessarily needed to be paid by Wednesday. We'd send them separately. Um, and you would have a forty eight hour turnaround on them because it wouldn't be part of the payroll.
Good, 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 that is really, uh. It's very confusing to have everything mixed in, I would just like. I'm happy that we're just gonna have payroll and whatever goes with payroll, I mean, if, if there's, um, charity deductions and stuff, that's fine, or. Or withholdings. But don't mix all the other bills in because it takes forever to hunt through to find things.
Yeah, we, we decided that would be less confusing, also. We will probably send you along with the town, the transfer station, sorry, payroll. A payroll plus bills because we are trying to always. As we receive money, get money out to our vendors. But that would be okay to. Process later is what we're saying, not by Wednesday, but at least by Friday so we could send them out. Does that work?
I understand why you're doing the transfer station and temporarily, that's fine, if there's not that many. Um. I know you don't have a cash flow and you're trying to get them out and that's understandable and then maybe when you. We get back into some cash flow, you can, you know, separate them out, but that's fine, it's mostly the. Regular orders.
Yeah, the town orders are pretty big, um, so we are going to do, keep them separate. And we're going to try to pay them on opposite weeks of the, um. Payroll, that doesn't always happen when we're trying to hit the first, um. You know, by the tenth of each month.
Right. Or just having them separate is, is good because. Like I said today, I have them all on my computer and I go back through and look. Um, for bills when I want to know we've paid someone for research and stuff and it'd be helpful to have them separated.
Okay, we can do that, yeah, Edie and I, uh, came up with a plan. It will be dependent, um, that we get them to you by noon if all of our employees turn in their. Um, time cards, we are going to let them know that. We don't, we're not trying to put a cap on the time we receive them, but. Reasonable time. In other words, like if Sally gets to work by ten on, uh, Monday, we asked that she come right in with her time card.
Well, I think you have every right to say this is the deadline or you have to wait another two weeks, I mean, she could put it in an envelope and put it in the box out there. On Saturday, there's lots.
Right, she could do that, yeah.
Somebody can take a picture and, and scan it and email it to you, there's other options if someone can't make that deadline.
Yeah, Pam does that, she sends it to us by, um, email.
Right.
Okay, I think we're on the same page then, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. For working with us.
No problem.
Nine one one, discontinued road name, um, Deb, Tom didn't write a letter. He told me. At home, I thought he was gonna write a letter, he wanted to discontinue. A road over there on Brookfield. Little dirt road. Is there another silly name on the other? Oh, I don't even recall, we discussed this, okay, so I don't know, we will handle this to the next meeting. And, um, maybe you could remind him to send us a letter? Yes. I'll review this CLA and the COD from state of Vermont, um. So a two thousand twenty two equalization study, um. So our common level of appraisal is at eighty five point seven oh. And our coefficient of dispersion is in sixteen point two five. When you get below eighty five, um, you have to have a reappraisal. We're point eighty five point seven oh.
Yeah.
And I would really suggest that, uh, the listeners put it out, we should have done it last year. Because it's, it's out three or four years. Before we can find someone.
I think, it might be even more, uh. If you look at the, the county.
Yeah.
Um, it's in, everybody's gonna be, but not everybody. Um, most towns are gonna have to, I don't know. Call it worse than.
Well, my part though, worse than. They're, they're like seventy six.
It's federal, so they did sixty two or something.
They have their own in-house person. Who wasn't a. Um. I saw on, uh, the LCT, um. I don't know which town it is, but there's a sample RFP. For one, but we need to do it.
Yeah, so I can add that, uh, our CLA dropped from ninety one point four six percent last year to eighty five point seven. And. The, the COD last year was eleven point eight four, now it's sixteen point two five. And so, uh, yeah, Tom and I looked at the statistics statewide. And sixty five percent of Vermont towns. Have their CLA and COD. Numbers at the point where they are. Told that they need to get a reappraisal. So the issue is the state approves only. You know, a limited number of vendors to conduct the reappraisals. And now we're looking at. You know, sixty five percent of towns at least. Uh, who will be. Seeking a vendor. And so, yeah, it's, it's going to be difficult, I would note that, uh, last year, Elmore.
And so, yeah, it's it's going to be difficult. I would note that last year, Elmore. Was told by the state that they needed to do a reappraisal and so their lister. Sent out about twenty RFPs and got one response. And that was from Nemrick. And so Elmore has. Contracted with Nemrick for a reassessment. Or reappraisal, which will start. This spring or summer. And so it might be that. Wilkett would want to contact Nemrick since they're going to be in Elmore and see if there is anything that could be worked out. Since they're in close proximity to starting to work. With Wilkett. The other question is. You know, I guess, yeah, I mean, it's 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 good to do a reappraisal, but is this the time to do a reappraisal? Because we're still in a goofy housing. But we're waiting three years, three or four years out, so I mean. Well, if we had to. Because that's when people aren't available, so we need to get on the list. Oh, yeah. We need to get on the list. We can say no. At some point, at some time, we'll scoop it up, but if we don't get on the list, we're not going anywhere. That's the problem I see. Well, yeah, I don't know if there is a list. If we don't get a. It was come day, you know, I mean. Not right now. Well, we won't know unless we send something out, but I mean, if Elmore got no responses. They weren't saying, okay, we'll take you in two years or three years. Tom and I would like to consider the possibility of doing a statistical analysis so we can change our. Tables somewhat in the meantime so that we're not sitting here. Yeah, I think it's extremely unfair for the state of Vermont. To just say, okay, sixty five percent of towns, you go out and you do a reassessment and it's going to cost you, yeah, maybe a hundred thousand dollars. You know, whatever, based on your size and, oh, if you can't get that done for three years, well then. Some of your your numbers are are still. Money, lots of money in school board is not gonna be happy and this has been going on for years, but we all know it. We know how it works. I know, and it's a very unfair system for the state to impose on us and then if they're gonna take a decision, but we can't even do. You know, a temporary change to our tables. I think that's unreasonable. And they're saying no, I think. Well, the district advisor. Was wired and said, oh, she didn't think that was her. Well, so we'll go to Jill Rehman. The director of PBR and get a response from her. Can we do this ASAP? Yes. We need to move on with getting something done because it's a lot of money to taxpayers that they're losing in their school funding.
The reappraisals in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars.
And money's been sitting in their account there. I don't know what they have, sixty five or something, what do you have in there? They get money every year. They've been saving it for years. For this purpose, the state pays you to have this reappraisal. And they give you money every year, which is only used for reappraisals.
Which we, okay.
We say, no, you're going to need one. So the coefficient of dispersion means that has to do with the equalization of how people are appraised. Now, and then the CLA is. What houses are selling for versus. What we have an appraisal for.
And this is all a result of. Real estate market.
Right. It is, yeah. If you take a look at the statistics since twenty twenty. It's. But it's. It's not like this is the only time it's ever happened. I mean, we've had three, two or three appraisals since I was town clerk. I mean, it's something that has to happen.
Last one was twenty fourteen. Fourteen and one was twenty.
Seven.
Was it seven, then twenty oh one?
My.
I think it was twenty oh one was the last one fired off.
We've done some like just adjusting land schedules. Trying to sweep by with certain things. I think our last one was done, I remember. And we did not go into any houses, so how would you know? And what it was like in there.
They never called my house.
Right, I don't think they.
They looked what was there and said, okay. See how anyone could afford changes anyway.
So now the state thinks everything is going out, and if you don't touch it. You can sit there and write. I'm doing the warning. What what kind of things are we going to put on the warning? We discussed the service. Service services in one. Rather than individually.
Correct.
And. The purchase of the. Parking lot. What else? Anything else? Seems like there's something else.
It's a sales that you still. I think the, what's the traditional one? The printing tax, the legal taxpayers.
Yeah, that I meant just now, I was thinking, so I want to. I was thinking there was something else that we're gonna put on there.
Do you want to put in there about the. Permitting of. Growers. Canopus growers or just. Not, I don't mean names, but. I mean permits and that issue.
Over the town report?
In the town.
Oh, we can in the town report, but not that straightforward.
You know, the voters, well, you know, we're taking all the offices out now. We don't have to accept the town report. That's not a law now. I mean. I just wondered if there were other things that we've talked about and over the.
I can't.
I don't, I don't think. I mean, we've had three, the state cannabis. Board has contacted us three additional times. For our local board to include. New growers, but none of them in Wilkett.
Yeah.
It's already, it's it's open on the. Because they use local postos. And then the cannabis board just couldn't.
I know, I had to call for somebody to know. That's why we were all Wilkett people are in the town report.
I will say this, they were busy this weekend.
Well, what happened? Well.
I don't know. I mean, they were in. Full force between. Up here by what used to be Claude Carson's house. Us old furniture in the churchyard. They were.
Controlling?
Oh, yeah, heavily.
Okay. The notice, I noticed more so police were really out on New Year's Eve. And I mean, it was New Year's Eve day and I saw three plovers.
Well, we had four in front of my house.
Oh, really?
I don't know if he just warned them, but. It's awful.
Wish they'd stop warning them and give them tickets.
Yeah. Especially when they're doing fifty plus or thirty.
So I have a request to go into executive session. To make a motion to go into executive session, we need to say. Personnel issue. It's seven forty one. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, on favor.
Okay.
I'm opposed, don't care.